Darren, you ready to hit the record button?
Hold up. You know. Someone else. Suzanne, can you hit your green?
It's Tyler.
All right. We ready? There we go. All right, if we're all ready, I'm going to call a meeting order. It's 18:02 on my watch. And I'm going to ask that the city council in rotation, say here, starting with Mayor Pro Tem LaBarre.
Here.
House Member Case.
I'm here, thank you.
House Member Neil.
Here, thank you.
House Member Path.
Here.
House Members Zuluaga.
Here.
And Mayor Carr in attendance. Thank you. All rise and let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. America, we love you.
Right. First up on our agenda is ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. Presentation of Employee of the Quarter Award to Kelly Simpkins Utilities Department presenter Kip Wiley.
I'm going to start over.
I'm sorry. Anyway, we, Suzanne, if you'd like to give an explanation and then hand it over to Kip, that would be fine with me.
Sure, thanks, Mayor.
We restarted, we were going to take everybody off.
Can you hear me, Council? Okay, thank you. This evening, Kip Wiley will be presenting Employee of the Quarter Award to Kelly Simpkins. This is a brand-new program that we've started here at the City of Woodland Park. And so Kelly is the very, very first person to receive this award, and I'm going to turn it over to Kip.
Thank you. As Suzanne said, this is the first-ever Employee of the Quarter, and I'm very pleased to present it to Kelly Simpkins. What's unique about this award is it is a nomination by coworkers, peers. It's not supervisors who provide the input, and that speaks volumes for Kelly. She has been recognized by her coworkers, receiving numerous nominations, and they have described her with terms like strong work ethic, attention to detail, hardworking, and very knowledgeable. And also in there, she was recognized for her outstanding performance assisting the Teller County Emergency Management Team. I would like to add to this list as well. Kelly is a very vital team member of the city. She's worked for the city for 12 years. She started in June of 2008, and also serves as the backup for many, many positions within the city, also making her extremely valuable. She is a key contributor, always goes the extra mile without hesitation. I'd also like to describe her with a couple other key phrases being reliable, committed, even a perfectionist, and very efficient with her time in everything she does. The city and I cannot thank her enough for her contributions to this community. I don't know what I would do without her. Kelly, we're lucky to have you on our team. Thank you very much, and congratulations for the first-ever employee of the quarter.
Thank you.
Stop, Kelly.
Yes, please.
I do have some words to say, if you have them.
Thank you, please proceed.
I'm honored to select this employee of the quarter, and even want to say I'm the first employee to host this new program. To the mayor, city council, and our city manager, a heartfelt thank you. While recognition is never sought, it is appreciated by all of our city employees when it comes. I would work for almost my co-workers in the direction of the nomination and selection of employee of the quarter. I would not be here if it wasn't for you all. I enjoy working, laughing, and learning with you all each and every day. There are several of you that I appreciate the chance, guidance, and mentorship that have shared with me over the years. I would not know where I am today if I'm not in. Thank you. Next up, I would like to make my third, what has led me to where I am today. I appreciate all that you have learned and teach me things I need to learn. I need to get where I am today. Each one of you more than words I could ever express. Thank you. And last, but far from least, my husband Wyatt. I would like to thank you for being my best friend and the rock that gets me through each day. Your listening ear, sense of reality, and incredible humor has guided me to where I am and to stay grounded and focused. Thank you for your endless support through good and bad. I am grateful to be able to serve the city and the county where I was raised and have lived my entire life. I have worked for the city for almost 12 years, and it remains an honor to do so. I am also grateful to you for allowing me to represent Woodland Park for the last six weeks as part of the Teller Combined Agency Team COVID Crisis Response Force at the Emergency Operations Center in Divide. In that role, I have had the opportunity to learn a tremendous amount and contribute my talents to this team in efforts to provide for our cities, including Woodland Park and County during this COVID-19 emergency. I have, excuse me, I have to share with you that the level of cooperation I have witnessed while on this team has not only made us successful as a combined community in the meeting, in meeting the challenges of COVID-19, but I feel like I am a better person as a result of this experience. The experience has reinforced my belief that by working together, we can accomplish so much more, and my hope that this will continue in the future. I am simply amazed at the talents and accomplishments this team has done for this unfortunate event. I know there are a lot of uncertainties with this worldwide pandemic and stress on Woodland Park. However, if we continue to work together and support each other through this difficult time, we will come out stronger. One thing we can all do is to stay positive and continue to work together. I challenge each of us to provide solutions rather than highlighting perceived shortcomings in these upcoming months. In closing, thank you once again for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Normally, we'd do more, but we'll do more when we can get together in person. I appreciate you so much. I've seen you over at the county working hard. In addition to all your duties you have to do at City Hall, your work is excellent. You've always got a smile on your face, and we're always happy to see you. So, congratulations.
Congratulations, Kelly. I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Suzanne, I see none at this point.
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar, and Suzanne LeClaire, please take it away.
Thank you. On the evening's consent calendar, we have one item, and that is the approval of the minutes from the April 16, 2020 city council meeting.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion from somebody for approval of the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the consent calendar as read.
A second.
Second by House Member Case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LaBarre?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much. We move on to public comment. Item's not on the agenda. I'll also turn that over to Suzanne if she's got anything.
I'm just going to do one final check, Mayor. I have no, none that have come through email, but do you see something in the chat? Let me see what that is. It's just a comment on how we're conducting the Zoom. It's nothing for the group. We'll take care of that.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
All right, item seven on the May 7, 2020 city council agenda is unfinished business. Item A, consider resolution number 863, revising the city council policies and procedures. We have in front of us Jason Myers, our city attorney, who has prepared a resolution. It's actually the first page of the PDF you got. And if I may mention that the version we've looked at is called 2020 Council Rules of Procedure Update.V4P33 Post 4-30-2020 Work Session, and you got it in a PDF form. Jason, would you like to say any words?
So, Council, as you're aware, you had the work session. There was a lot of discussion, but there was not any additional changes after that. So, this is the version that you had for the last week or so. I'm not aware of any additional changes that are requested or needed at this point, but certainly it's up to Council. There's no other questions, comments, or otherwise. It should be ready to go. I did want to add that once we pass this version, assuming that there's no changes, what we'll do is we'll clean it up so that it'll be printed as Council Rules of Procedures and take out all the formatting to add and delete, and so you'll all get a clean copy. That's easier to read for your reference moving forward, but as of right now, this highlights all of the changes from what's currently existing.
Thank you, sir. So, as our city attorney mentioned, we have had no additional comments. We went through a long work session, and everybody made their case for different things. We have in front of us a work product that will be cleaned up, as the city attorney said. And I would like to go rotate through and see if anybody has any last comments before we move to consider. Mayor Pro Tem LaBarre.
No, my only comments were I still think it's a little overreaching into our personal lives and business, but other than that, I'm fine with it.
Thank you, noted. House Member Case.
Thank you. I just would like to make for the record Section 10E, as in Edward, 6. It's my position that that should be stricken from these procedures because staff issues are taken care of in their policies and procedures manual. But other than that, and it won't stop me from approving these. I just want, for the record, I think that that is inappropriate for this document. And I would agree with Hillary. There is a little bit of imposition on ourselves personally that I think is a little overkill, but again, it won't stop me. Because I think that a lot of it is suggestions and not, as I said before, there's a lot of shoulds and not a lot of shalls. So, I'm good with it, and thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Your case is noted. Thank you. House Member Neil.
I have no comments. I agree with the document, with the final edits that were added. Thank you.
Thank you. House Member Pat.
I have no, I only have one comment. I'm pleased with the document because I think it brings us clearly in line with the both letter and spirit of the city charter. Thanks.
Thank you, noted. House Members Zuluaga.
I'm pleased with the edits. I have no further additions, and I am in support of this document.
Thank you. I'll weigh in just barely in that, and I'll repeat that Jason, the city attorney and I have worked closely with this, and we're ready to proceed. If the council approves this pretty quickly to a cleaned-up version and get it out to everybody and move on to other business, but thank you. With that said, anybody have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the document as presented.
I'll second.
Second. Thank you. Suzanne.
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
LaBarre?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all Council for excellent work. And we've made some excellent notations for the next time we take a look at this. Thank you very much. We will move on to 7B, which is the approval to approve professional services contract with Logan Simpson Consulting Firm for the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Update and Land Use Code Review for $100,000. And Sally Riley, our planning director, I think is available for answering questions or with a presentation, maybe. I'm not sure. We've kind of done that already, but Sally, if you wouldn't mind stepping up and helping us out.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. I understood that it is Council's interest to delay a decision on this item for a couple of months, and I have checked with Logan Simpson and with the DOLA representative to ensure that we would not jeopardize the $50,000 grant or our relationship with Logan Simpson if we were to delay a couple of months in order for you to be able to get more comfortable with the budget, perhaps budget impacts, and also the scope of work. So, that would be, you know, even staff's recommendation at this point is to come back in two months and have Council in the meantime provide us with any input that you may have on the scope of work. The Logan Simpson is very amenable to make tweaks or edits for greater clarity in the scope of work at your pleasure.
Thank you. I'm going to go through the rotation and let people understand that if we have extensive questions, staff is always available to, for inquiries. And as long as we're not directing staff, we can make all inquiries that we want. So, I want to mention that if we have specific, a lot of specific small questions, to address those to the planning director. And, but I would like to hear from each person going around once again, and any major issues that they would like to put on the table right now would be fine with me. If that's, if, I hope people understand what I'm trying to say, but Mayor Pro Tem LaBarre, do you have anything?
I wasn't included in any request to delay this decision, so I'm curious what communication was sent to ask for delay because, as a council member, I was not included in any discussion to delay this decision.
I would defer to city manager Tangman.
Thank you, Sally.
Just say as well that I was not, I did not have any knowledge of any plan to delay at all.
Thanks. I guess I could make a comment that we, as a result of hearing that there are some concerns about potential scope of work and city council members that may want to add some changes to increase the engagement and or wait till some of the impact of COVID-19 occurs, so there can be more in-person meetings, and also to just maybe wait until we see some of the budgetary outcomes that may come from the May 12 projections from the state of Colorado, that we reached out to both Logan Simpson and DOLA to get their feedback on whether or not a potential delay would impact anything that we're doing. The major impact that we could see is obviously it'll expand the timeline to get to the zoning code update. The first portion of the comp plan traditionally engages the community significantly across all different areas of the community, and so usually go into that. So, we'll just delay that several months. But we wanted to make sure that DOLA was comfortable, like Sally said, that we don't lose our grant, the $50,000 grant in the process, and that the consultant is still available. We don't lose the consultant in the process as well. So, with that being said, we reached out and secured an additional two months, which in reality, I think will allow city council to discuss the potential changes you're looking for in it. Because, you know, there's, there has been some relevant discussions about potential changes, about city council input upfront, about expanding the engagement process, about waiting until COVID-19 impacts so that we have more opportunity for in-person engagement. So, it's there. It's there for discussion by city council if you want to do it, right? It's not, the staff has done the research and the legwork to get that there. If city council were to want to delay it for several months, the staff's recommendation is, if you want to do that, take a two-month delay, get the input to Sally between now and then so that we can get it in a fashion that is acceptable for city council, and then readdress it two months from now so that we know whether or not we can maintain the consultant beyond that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Darren. We briefly talked about it in our agenda prep this morning, and that was the first time that we talked about the two-month delay situation. So, I would then therefore go to House Member Case. You were next.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. That, I don't have a problem with it. I just wondered where that came from, and it sounds like staff and the mayor had a conversation, and I don't think it's a bad idea. Maybe just a thought I had is, I'd like to see the code review begin. I know that's a lengthy process, involves the planning commission quite a bit, and not necessarily in the initial phase, a lot of public engagement. Am I correct in that assumption? Okay, so if we were to approve the contract, that could begin, which is the grant portion of the comprehensive plan. That's what the grant covers from DOLA. Because I know that that's something we're all looking forward to, including the community, for reasons that we all know. Because it's very dated and has recently posed some issues for not only the planning staff, but the community and the council, and it seems like that is kind of a burning issue. So, I would really like to see us approve this so we can get started with that. And then it makes sense to me that the public engagement portion probably could wait until we have more opportunities to come together. Being through the process before, that was really, it's so important. This is a great opportunity for the city council, particularly the new ones that had a very passion, large passion for communication with the citizens and engaging with the citizens. This is the most opportune time and process with which to hear from our community and to really reach out. And from what I read in the contract, this contract, this consultant is really, has a great plan and even a follow-up and a revising of plan to really engage all facets of our community. So, I would hope that we, as a council, would take advantage of that opportunity to hear from our constituents and what they see are the future of our city to look like from all those different areas that are in the comp plan. So, I would, I think it's a great contract. It far exceeds the one we had before in a consultant and the process. So, I'd like to see it move forward in that respect and get started with the code review. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you. Excellent points. Council Member Neil, you're up.
Thank you very much, Mayor Carr. And let me be upfront with those that may not have voiced any kind of a concern. During my orientation on Monday, when I was going through with the different city personnel, I had mentioned to Sally, Darren, and Jason that I was uncomfortable with the the contract being awarded as is for two reasons. Sally, and actually, everybody's kind of talked about it, Darren and Sally, the COVID-19 recovery plan, I think, needs to precede the comprehensive plan because the recovery plan may have some financial implications that we have not sat down and identified sources for those funds. So, I wanted to see the holistic COVID-19 recovery plan before we move forward on the contract. And the second thing, I was uncomfortable with the structure of the contract. There are a couple of things that I was uncomfortable with. The problem is when we had the work session and we were briefed on the contract, Logan Simpson was present, and I've been a contract negotiator for two decades now. I would never start bringing up my side of the contract's issues with the opposite side sitting there. And simply because of the timelines that we've had, there was no second opportunity for the city council to sit down with the work session and go through the contract and point out and discuss the things that the new council members may have thought the contract needed some work. Darren had mentioned one thing in particular. I think it's very late to have the city council really not appear until task number 13.
No.
Whenever we're doing something such as this type of endeavor, I would have expected the city council to be one of the very first meetings which they give what, in my world, are called the intent. What is the intent of the city council? What are the thoughts of the city council? What is some general guidance that you kick off the city staff and the contractor performing to? So that there's no surprise at the end, after the city staff and the citizens and everything has spent a lot of time and money discussing, coming up with proposals, only to find out that we may be 90 degrees out of sync, maybe even worse, from what the city council is thinking. So, I just wanted the structure of the statement of work changed around and have that discussion before we awarded the contract. So, those are the two reasons why I'm uncomfortable with approving the contract as it is tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Member Neil. Council Member Pat, you're up.
I agree substantially with Council Member Neil's statements, and I think and I think this sort of work product can be easily considered with new council members instead of receiving finished product. So I think it's appropriate for us to delay this for a little while, and then take the next steps from there after we've had time to consult with ourselves.
Thank you. Council member Zulalaga, if you'd like to weigh in.
Thank you Mayor. Well, I am surprised and delighted in the delay. It is certainly what I was speaking to at our last meeting at the work session. I think there's too many unanswered parts of this contract and the scope and the way it's going. So I'm, I welcome this delay. It'll allow us to also examine this in the, in the budget priorities post-COVID. So I, I do recognize what council member Case said about, about the code reviews. But once again, I think city council and the citizens need to be engaged in that process in advance of bringing in an outside vendor. So this will give us an opportunity to address some of those issues as well. So thank you Mayor for getting this suggested moved along out a couple of months.
Well, we haven't done anything yet, and it wasn't me, but anyway.
Well, it sounds like it was with the negotiations you were having this morning.
Well, we, we, we did discuss with the city manager who had already come to staff. Staff's done a lot of work behind the scenes, as they always do, of course. I would ask the city manager if you've got hard dates and hard deadlines that you're working with to inform the council. We talked about that this morning. Do you have any further information, please?
Sure. I guess my recommendation again is that we readdress, we have hard, we, we are good on the, the grant up until, I believe, September, correct Sally? We, we, but the issue is with, we need to readdress this issue with the consultant in the next two months. We don't have, we don't have approval from the consultant to extend it beyond two months. That's why I'm, I'm recommending city council that we address any of the issues that you have with the current scope of work between now and the next two months, so that we can get that information. And I'd recommend as you give that, you send that information to Sally, you know, over the next two to four weeks, and then you likely have a work session between now and then with all that aggregated, those aggregated recommendations on the intent, the increase in engagement, all of that, so that we can bring that to city council and, and, and get that, get that, those recommendations over to the consultant and get it in a, in a manner that is acceptable to all the city council members, at least as close as possible. But let me say just one thing. I have, you know, I'm not, I, I know there's been some discussions about the budget, but I've already, I've, I've briefed the city council on the budget this weekend, or sent it, sent an update to the city council about where we stand on the budget already. I am not necessarily as concerned about the impact of this to the budget as, as we have a $50,000 grant, and I believe we've taken enough, we've frozen enough elements of the general fund budget that we can, we can absorb the, this, this plan, the $50,000, this plan over the next three or four months. In fact, we're, we're actually, we're saving almost $30,000 a month just from some of the closures. That could be almost captured within a month and a half to, to absorb this that we wouldn't normally have had in the budget. So again, I, I, I don't think the budget is necessarily the issue. I think we want to make sure that the, that the plan and the scope of work really truly fits what city council would like to see, and, and so that we get ahead of it. One last thing is that there's been a recommendation to go into the zoning code update first. I guess my only concern is that typically the process is you do the engagement first, so that you get community engagement. So that can be, and I'm talking not just a limited, I'm saying everybody from all sectors of our community. So that can help be a tool for both the planning commission and the city council to update the code in the future. To put, it's almost like putting the cart before the horse. You try to change the, the code first before you actually get the input from the citizens. So.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay. So just, I want to make sure that we're clear about that. So that's all I have. Thank you Mayor Carr.
Thank you. So my read on this is that there's some sentiment to, to put a postponement on this. The, the businesses in front of us is to perfo, approve the professional services contract. I would suggest if we make a motion to postpone this, which is what we would have to do, that we all, everybody who has questions, make sure you get them into the city staff, Sally Riley, I'm sorry, the planning director, the city manager, those being the principal active people in there. I, I don't know if you have any for Kip Wiley also, but Sally can redirect those, and so can the city manager. So with that, I would ask that if somebody's interested in delaying this, oh, I'm sorry, council member Pat, she's got his hand up. I apologize.
And also council member Case did too. But I just want to reiterate and enhance council member Neil's point that though we have this grant in front of us, and though the numbers so far seem okay, we still do not have a clear view of where the budget is going. And therefore, it is very important to take into account that what might be necessary for this $50,000 that would come out of our own budget. I think it's very important at this time to take great caution, knowing that we don't know what's coming our way yet. We're hopeful that it all looked good, but it is very clear that we don't know precisely what's going on. So if the news is good, great, but that is one aspect of this that is very critical at this time. That's all I have.
Council member Case, I apologize. I didn't see your hand up first. You were up, but you get to have the final word, I guess.
Well, thank you Mayor Carr. Actually, Mr. Pat had his hand up before me, but thank you. I just wanted to point out, I have my budget in front of me, and very familiar with it. We did budget, including the comp plan, for one, almost a $1.6 million, 17% fund balance, unreserved, undesignated, which is equivocal to our savings, if you will, including all the expenses that were budgeted for the year. Considering that, and the 300 and some odd thousand dollars, I'm looking for the number in Darren's memo, almost three, over $300,000 in savings from frozen expenses. That takes us to about a $2 million fund balance, just with what we've done so far. I, I, it would take a significant catastrophe. And, and considering we're only splitting a 25% share of anything, and, and having been through the disaster twice and done the reimbursement to FEMA, I, I would just say that I don't see $50,000. It's like a $20 bill in my pocket. So not to, I mean, I am probably, the Val can, Mayor can attest to this. I'm as, as tight with the purse strings as anybody comes, and very protective of our unreserved fund balance. It is my, it is my agenda, if I have one, in my seat. But I, I, I don't have any concerns with the contract, and I don't have any concerns with the scope of work, and I certainly don't have any concerns with the budget. This, this, I think, the opportunity to work with our citizens and get vision from them outweighs the $50,000. So thank you. I'd love the engagement. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Thank you. Council member Pat, you have your hand up again, please.
Yeah, I just want us to keep in mind and keep in front of us that we've got a long-term debt situation that notwithstanding current budget, budget issues, which still are undetermined, we need to be very cautious where we're at. This is a serious issue, and it holds us back in many ways right now. So that's why we need to make sure we know exactly what we're doing. So I would throw that.
Absolutely. I would agree with you 550%.
Thank you. I'm going to suggest that there, there's enough questions and enough new perspectives on this that we, we entertain as council the suggestion that we delay this for two months and, and delve into this. Some of us obviously have spoken and don't have any problems. Some of us do. I think that two months or whatever it ends up being will be a very valuable time to get a lot of questions answered. Well, by that time, we'll be meeting in person. We can do work sessions, which are much easier than this format. I'm sure you're all agreeing with that, or I hope you are anyway. So if, if that's okay, I would like somebody to put a motion out there. Jason, I mean, I'm sorry, city attorney, what, what do we need to do here, please?
A motion to table this to a later date. I think two months puts us at July 2nd about, as far as council meetings are concerned. I don't know if you want it to be that specific of a date, given the July 4th holiday, or if you're just wanting to table it until we bring it back in a couple of months and not have a date specific, and that'll provide you some flexibility on meeting schedules in the future.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we table this to the July 2nd meeting. Can table it again at that meeting if we need to.
I, I would suggest that, thank you, but I, I'm, I'm concerned about, we know what happens around July 4th for a lot of people. Can, would it be possible to modify your motion to July in general?
Sure. If that's all right with the city attorney, if we don't need a date specific, that's fine.
And that'll be, that'll work.
Okay. I will modify my motion to approve a tabling 7B to a date in July.
I second the motion.
Thank you very much.
I would like to move that this motion be amended by language that does not tie it to a date or a month, but rather an event, which is the recovery plan is well, for the COVID-19 is well into its implementation, and we have a minimum of one to two months of data, financial data that aligns with the recovery plan, the medical.
We have the motion on the table ready. We need to.
Mr. Carr, Mayor Carr?
Yes.
I would just suggest, as I said earlier, if we're not ready to consider it at our meeting in July, that we consider it, we can table it again.
I, I would suggest that's appropriate. I understand council member Neil's concern. I have likewise concerns about a lot of things with.
As do we all.
With the hat that we're all wearing, and I, I think we, with the understanding that it will be, it will be tabled for consideration at that, at that point. Any, any other, council member Neil, you have your hand up again, please.
Well, I was trying to respond to council member Labars that I had, there was a motion on the table, and following Roberts rules, I had to wait for, I could not interrupt the speaker until I could make my motion. So I was trying to follow the Roberts rules.
Thank you.
Mayor, I can't raise my hand, so just if I, I just make a comment real quick.
Please.
I, I will tell you, in terms of council member Neil's concerns, we should have up to three months of data available by the time that meeting occurs. In, in terms of the impact of COVID-19, obviously three points of data make a trend. I think that would be an ideal time for us to present that to city council at that time and give you a much clearer picture of the economic impact of COVID-19 at that point. So I think the timing might be really good, actually, for, for city council, just to address council member Neil's concerns.
Well, and to council member Case's point that we can delay it again. If, if we're, if we're not uncomfortable with where we're at in two months, maybe we will have to delay it again. In two months frankly is pretty short for what we're looking at right now. But I think with the understanding that we're going to reevaluate at a July postponement, I think that may cover, cover the situation, and we can all debate it again. We have no data, blah, blah, blah. I, I think that's, I think we'll be okay, but I would defer back to council member Neil if he has comfort with the level that we will, we will bring this up again in two months, whatever, you know, whatever that date certain is, and evaluate whether you, you're correct. We have not enough insufficient data and things like that.
And Your Honor, if I could, from a procedural standpoint, we have a motion, a second. Part of this is a little awkward with being online. So Mr. Neil, motion basically would be a motion to amend the original motion, which generally speaking, the person who made the original motion can allow the amendment or not. In this case, as I understand it, council member Case did not want to allow that amendment to her motion that was seconded. So at this point, what we have on the table is the original motion as presented and seconded, which is to push this to sometime in July.
Yes, I apologize for being overly, you know, explaining things from a perspective of a common sense situation without being protocol oriented here. But I, I, I want the comfort level to be such that we, we're trying to, our best to accommodate everybody. But you're right, we have a motion on the table. And a second, I believe.
I'd like to say I'm just not comfortable with an open-ended, particularly with, particularly with the grant pending. I just, I'm not comfortable with something open-ended. I'm always, I've always been used to a date certain for tabling, so.
How about July 16th? Because that's our, that's not near July 4th, and it's, it is our meeting day.
Perfect.
Would you mind?
July 16th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a second on the amendment to July 16?
I'll second that.
Okay. Now votes.
Okay. Labar?
A point of order. Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Can we please have the, we have it read to us before we vote on it, what it actually is?
Sure. I can read it to you. A motion was made to table the approval of the professional services contract with Logan Simpson, consulting firm for the 2020 comprehensive plan update, and land use code review for $100,000 until a date certain of July 16, 2020.
Thank you. I think we're at roll call, please.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Zulalaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Seeing no other unfinished business, we're going to ordinances on initial posting. And we do have public comment in this section. I don't know if we have any public comment, but the first item is consider ordinance 1378, series 2020, appropriating the purchase of certain water shares on initial posting instead of public hearing for May 21st, 2020. Kip Wiley, you're up.
Thank you Mayor Carr. With your permission, I'd like to actually add agenda item 10A as well, resolution 862. They're the same discussion, if that's okay with you.
Without objection, council?
I'm fine with it. Fine.
Without objection.
No objection.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you council. Before you tonight is an initial posting with ordinance 1378. This ordinance is basically the real property acceptance for council in regards to the water shares, because they are. in regards to the water shares because they are classified as real property. Resolution 862 is the contract to enter in with the shareholder. So for council, you have the acceptance of real property in the contract. These are Twin Lake Reservoir and Canal Company shares from David and Suzanne Jordan. It's one Twin Lake share. This water is fully consumable water. That makes it legal for us to pump our local sources. Very, it's our most valuable and most important water because if we don't have this type of water, we cannot pump those sources. This water every year is dictated off of the snow, the snow pack. So every year the shares produce a certain amount of yield. And this year, the yield on the shares I am projecting to be average around one share or one acre foot per share. To date, we own 193.77 Twin Lake shares. This would add one more to that. Also, today if this is approved, this would be the third Twin Lake share this year. So if approved, there would be a total of $127,500 in Twin Lake shares. This, my item was not budgeted because Twin Lake shares don't be, aren't available very often and I can't budget for them.
Stop.
However, the Water Enterprise Fund is very healthy. The end of year projected fund balance is 3.5%. So this would dig into that fund balance. However, it's very healthy in my opinion and it would be irresponsible of us not to pursue these shares when they come available. So before you tonight, I ask for your approval on initial posting of ordinance 1378 and approval of resolution 862 to enter into a contract to purchase shares. Wait, 63, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Is it two? Yeah, 862. To enter into a contract to purchase shares for $42,500 for this one share. This is the same price we purchased the previous eight shares for over the last four years. I will share with council, we've had a couple other opportunities to purchase shares and we have fallen short to purchase those due to asking prices being higher than what we are willing to pay. With that, I can answer any questions for council.
Council, any questions? House member Case?
Kip, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the price. Was it 122.5 or just 22.5?
For the share, it's 42.5.
Okay.
Eight for the three shares. If this is approved, it was 127.5.
Thank you.
You answered my question, which was the average rate we're paying and it sounds like you're right in line with that. Any other questions? Council member Zuluwaga?
So Kip, are you saying on 862 that you want to put in an offer on that for 42.5? Is it one share? Is that right?
That's correct. It's one share.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? I don't see anybody with their hands raised. I guess we'll open it up to public comment. Do we have any?
No, sir. There's no public comments. Do you see any, Jason?
There was a hand, but it got put down.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't have the attendees up here. Okay. So no further public comments, so I'll close the public comment portion. Any rebuttal to the public comments? Sorry. Hearing none. Any final questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you, Kip. We will now proceed to entertaining a motion. Would you like to take these separately?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So the first.
To approve ordinance 1378 on initial posting and set the public hearing for May 21st.
Thank you. We have a second.
Second to motion.
Thank you. Council member Pat seconds. Suzanne?
Thank you. Neil?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. So the second, we're going to skip to 10A and then come back to public hearings.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution 862 for the purchase of water shares.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Pam?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We have no public hearings and no new business outside of the item we just mentioned. So we're on to reports. I have a couple of things. The Teller Senior Coalition is started delivering lunches for seniors in Woodland Park from Johnny's and they have received grant funding for that. And their drivers are active doing this during this time. On May 16th, we have a drive-through farmer's market. That's from 9:00 AM to 1300. And the next thing I have is America's Veterans Rally. We got notification that they're going to try to put it on August 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And they're talking to both Cripple Creek and Woodland Park and the city manager is in conversations with some of these people and we'll see what we can do to help them. The only other thing I have is discussing the situation that we're in, which is safer at home. We're in a new, new norm, I guess, for our situation, which basically started on, I believe, May 4th. For some of the things, up to 50% of staff can work at certain places, but we're in safer at home. There's quite extensive things online, including the city and the Teller County that describe all those things. And I welcome everybody to be safe and be conscious and courteous to everybody. And that's all I have, I think. Mayor Pro Tem LeBarre?
I don't have anything necessarily for council or event recommendations. I know that the county, I believe, is going to be working on a waiver to submit to the governor so that all of our businesses can be opened fairly and I 100% support that. Thanks.
Thank you. Council member Case?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I have nothing at this point, but thank you for asking.
Thank you. Council member Neil?
I do have the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Liaison Report from the meeting on May 4th. We had five members in attendance, two guests and myself. The different subcommittees rendered their reports. They, I'm going to streamline some of it instead of hitting every single one of the subcommittees. They are moving forward, but they're having to adjust their plans for several activities because of the COVID-19 disruption. The most important thing that I do want to make sure people are aware of is that the citywide cleanup that was scheduled for June 6th has been postponed until August 8th. And that the the Main Street Mini Cleanup is tentatively still scheduled for May 29th in which the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful will assist. I think those are some two dates that people need to be aware of. And that's all I have with my committee report.
Thank you very much. Council member Pat?
Yes, kind of extending off of Mayor Pro Tim LeBarre's statement related to Teller County seeking a waiver. I equally endorse that, but I had some added comments. I also hope that we'll be able to consider here in Woodland Park a more aggressive opening. Our businesses are in dire straits right now. Our small businesses and while large platform entities in the city, which we are glad were open, were the only ones that could really operate freely in the city. And so I'm hopeful that we will also consider something more aggressive that will give us a chance to get our small businesses moving very quickly. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Council member Zuluwaga, please proceed.
Thank you, mayor. I'll start with the Main Street report. I am the liaison from Main Street. And I spoke with Gail Wingard about what she would like me to kind of point out and confirming what councilman Neil says. It is, the mini cleanup is scheduled for the 29th of May between 9:00 and noon. Volunteers are being solicited. They'll be sending out emails and notices in the paper, et cetera. So if you are interested in getting out and helping us clean up the virus and opening our city for business, you'll need gloves and masks, she says, but, and you'll have to RSVP. So more details will be coming on that. They're working on ideas on how to promote the business district in this time. The wayfinding signs are likely to be rolled out in June. Wayfinding signs, to my understanding, are going in the parking lots that already have signage and it'll be the same sort of signs, just a different color. It'll help people know where to walk, walkability signs, shopping, things like that. And the third point is summer projects. Oh, the lighting of Amler Alley and patio lighting down the sides of it. Coming from a Dole Grant, they're likely to roll out sometime in the summer. It's not specific yet when that is. The second committee that I am liaison for is the DDA. And let's see. So from the DDA, there's been two meetings and I was unable to attend the meeting this week. It was a bit of technical problems with it as well. But the prior meeting, I had personally, it was my first time to meet with them and I said that I would do, suggest that if members of the DDA board would like to get in front of the camera, I'd be happy to interview them so that the public could get a better understanding of some of the issues, some of the complexities of the DDA and see actually what they're doing that's good for our community. So that's now, we've done, I think, five interviews. That's up on a Facebook website called Woodland Park Now for anybody who wants to view those. I'm told that positive questions and constructive comments are welcome. The DDA is also working with the city manager and his crews to begin pressure washing the downtown businesses and the highway in conjunction with state authorities. I understand they do have to work on closing down the highway at times. So one of the things that came out of the meeting that I really liked was one of the people mentioned, Woodland Park is cleaning out the COVID virus and we're open for business. Having that as a tagline, so I think with what Main Street's planning, what DDA's planning in terms of the cleanup with the pressure washing and an event that they have scheduled for Woodland Station. Let me see if I can find the details of that. Woodland Station is on May 30th and 31st. But for some reason, I can't find my sheet. 30th and 31st and it's Woodland Park Music Festival. The Teller County has offered to provide face mask. There's going to like 13 picnic tables. And there'll be local food vendors from our local food vendors here in town that were already existing. The Rodeo Club is putting it on. It's a nonprofit event. It's going to go from 11:00 to 6:00 on Saturday to 4:00 on Sunday. So I think that's a great target date for us to shake off the virus and step out again in open spaces. So let's see, anything else from that? I think that's all I have on the DDA. And my last, my last comment is I've been thinking about the the fact that in our city government, we are not following the policies that are happening at a federal, state, and county level about opening in prayer. So I've had some of the community ask me why we don't. So I wanted to know if there's any other interest amongst you for us to examine this.
Come again?
Oh, council member Pat, I see your hand raised.
Let council member Case go. She was first.
Okay.
I just didn't get what he said. I just wondered if he wouldn't mind repeating that, please. Thank you.
Sure. I have folks in the community asking me why we don't pray before our council meetings when at a federal, state, and county governments, they all open their sessions with prayer. So I'm asking if council is willing to look at this.
Council member Pat, go ahead.
I think it's a good idea. I think that it's an appropriate thing to do. I think based upon who we are as a country and much of what our origins are and how the people, excuse me, how the mix of people in our community. It's something that has been done and is regularly done in every state, some of which are less likely to have come up with it themselves or to support it and others that are more likely. And I think it's an appropriate thing, so I'm certainly willing to consider it.
I guess I would ask the city attorney to weigh in or at least research where we're at with that. And if not for this meeting, for some future meeting.
Apparently, is that a, I guess, do we want to set up a work session to have that, or do you want me to provide a legal memorandum to council?
That was my intent, is you do a, look to see if we've got any situations or give us a little, yes, a brief, please.
Okay.
House member Pat has his hand raised.
Yeah, I don't think that this is a work session thing. I think it's just something that'd be great to know if anyone wants to consider and then make, you know, once we get a report directly sent to us from the city attorney, then we can all decide. And if someone wants to move such an idea, then we just take it up then. I don't know that there's a lot of discussion to be had and I don't know that it's useful to spend a lot of time discussing. If others feel differently, that's fine. That's just my opinion.
Well, I'm.
Mayor Pro Tem LeBarre has her hand up.
Thank you, mayor. I know that it's legal. It doesn't, we don't really need any kind of counsel from Jason regarding it. However, I am not willing to introduce it because I am not willing to alienate those of our city who do not participate in Christian prayer. I know that we have many, many different types of faith up here. If you are personally Christian, I am. I am Irish Catholic. I am not offended by religion and I am not against it, but it is my personal belief and it is not for me to push onto anyone. And that's where I stand.
Thank you. Council member Neil, you had your hand up also.
Yeah. For very similar reasons of what council member LeBarre said, I would not want to see prayer introduced. I think there is a slippery slope with Article 2, Section 4 of our Colorado Constitution, and I guess we would have to have Jason really look closely at that if council members did not consent, which is a part of that section of our constitution. Now, what I'm trying to work, an understanding of where Robert and Jim come from and the membership that sponsored their election into the city council where prayer is important to them. I think, understanding that there is such a diverse community where one person's prayer can be very insulting to another person, rather than having a prayer, perhaps we have a moment of silence where everyone has the opportunity to say whatever prayers they wish to say in their own beliefs. Acknowledge that and then we move into the government business. Thank you.
Thank you. In response to that, as you know, I had a moment of. Thank you. In response to that, as you know, I, I had a moment of silence for our dear Mayor Levy at one point, which kind of fits into what you, you were saying. Let's see, Councilmember Case, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I, I go along the same lines as Councilmember Neal and Council and Mayor Protem Labar. I think that prayer is a personal thing. I think that each of one of us, if that's which, what we wish to do before that we engage in the council meeting, they can do that on their own. I don't think we need a moment of silence. I think that that's a very personal thing. I'm a Christian. I'm a Methodist. I have been grown up that way, but as Mr. Neal and Ms. Labar have stated, we have a very diverse belief. There's, there's everything with regards to, and that would take up. Honoring all of those would take up a great deal of time before our meetings. And I would invite whomever would like to have a prayer before our meetings to do so. And we stick with the Pledge of Allegiance as a governmental body. Thank you.
Councilmember Zuluaga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So out of respect for our time, I request that our city clerk enter an entire transcription that I have here into the record, which each of the community can read for themselves. But I'd like to summarize just a few points, if I may.
Yes, if you're brief, please.
The purpose of civil government is to secure, I just want to confirm. City clerk, did you hear that request?
Yes, sir. And I would appreciate if you could email me the transcription you'd like me to place.
Absolutely. Okay.
If you.
The purpose of civil government is to secure our God-given rights. Our founding creed as a nation is laid out in the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. This is the purpose of our elected role as city council for Woodland Park. As I've studied source documents and the original intent for our nation, I discovered a clear biblical worldview that our founding fathers and mothers had. Sadly, we fail to identify the enemies of our republic. For those who may not be familiar with the tenets of one of the many enemies of our freedom as a people and a nation, I quote the third plank of the Communist Manifesto, abolition of all rights of inheritance. One of its founders, Karl Marx, said, keep people from their history and they are easily controlled. We have permitted a religion of no religion to usurp our history and our inheritance as a free people and thus are witnessing a decay in our culture. Consistent with the equal station of the laws of nature and nature's God entitled us, we see in the very preamble of Colorado's Constitution of 1876, our state founders declare, we, the people of Colorado, with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of the universe, in order to form a more independent and perfect government, establish justice, ensure tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this constitution for the state of Colorado. How do we secure these blessings? We have at least 33 churches in our community. I propose to invite pastors and preachers from each of these on a rotation basis to come and open our meetings in prayer. At work sessions and special meetings, we can have one of our own members open with prayer. Thank you. And I recommend that we make an agenda item for a future meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to cut the council reports short and, and welcome you to introduce that on a future agenda and move on, if that's okay with everybody. And Councilmember Pfaff, you had. Sorry?
Point of order, I would like to have an opportunity for my hand to be recognized since we did sit through the dialogue.
Yes, please go ahead.
Since we're going to be entering things into the record, I would like to have so that those that do not agree with the position of Councilmember Zuluaga from Article two, section four of the Colorado Constitution, the sentence that says, no person shall be required to attend or support any ministry or place of worship, religious sector denomination against his consent. We have three non-consenting council members. So I would ask that our city attorney pay very close attention to the Colorado Constitution when we start looking at this, what's not even a, a true motion or a resolution to be considered or even an item, but.
Yes, this is not on our agenda at this point, which was my point to move on and, and put this on a future agenda if, if we, if it's pushed forward by two council persons, Councilmember Pfaff. And now this will be the last question, the last little bit.
So I want to express great distress at the statement that would be made in this council that other, that people, that, that the respect of people who have no faith in this community somehow has greater precedence over people that do. I just recorded an interview, which will go public sometime soon with my very close friend, former Denver Post editorial board member and current National Review writer and atheist, David Harsanyi. We've been very close friends for many years. In our interview today, we had an interesting discussion on the topic very similar to this. And he states as an atheist, how important it is that we have a very free exercise of religion. He expressed that in situations like this one, he is never offended by it and actually feels very good about it. He said, he wished he could come to a conclusion that there were a God because he appreciates the strong sentiments, the moral foundations of people who express faith in God. There is no offense unless it's done in an offensive manner. And in the United States Congress from our, from the beginning of time and under various parties and under the control of various speakers of the House, as well as in our state government right now with a majority that frankly doesn't tend to have a higher respect for religion. There's always a prayer. It's always of a nature that is respectful and representative of vast opinions in religious faith. It is entirely appropriate to do something like this. And again, I express great offense to someone who would say that there can only be a respect for those who don't have faith and that everyone else must conform to that because of the potential offense for us, one group of people. We must have a respect for all groups of people and therefore this is worthy for us to consider.
Right, thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to cut this.
Mr. Mayor.
I've got to cut this off. This is not a place for debate. We, if we bring this up in a future council meeting, we can debate all we want. It's been a report of Councilmember Zuluaga. He has interest in this. We, we, he, he has an avenue to pursue that in the future. I, I'm not going to turn council reports into debate. We'll move on to city attorney's report. I beg your pardon, Councilmember Case, but I, I'm trying to move on. City attorney report. Oh, you're on mute. Let's.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Just to be brief, I wanted to make sure council and the community is aware on the 21st, we have a couple of quasi judicial issues that council will be hearing, one of which we anticipate might be somewhat heated. So I wanted to provide some information to the council and to the community as to the appropriate process of getting information. If you want your voice to be heard as a community member, please contact staff with your comments. Please do not contact council members as council members must maintain their neutrality before those decisions are made. As a council member, if you have folks in the community that try to get ahold of you to, to bend your ear on those quasi judicial issues, please refer them to staff to, and encourage them to come into the public comment portion so that we were maintaining the integrity of our process. So I just wanted to point that out and so that way we're protecting our process and keeping everybody inside the, like, the right lines.
Thank you, sir. I, I do want to mention, I did mention this before in my report, but my intention is that we go, we go back to the 21st with our distancing and our precautions. Hopefully this will be our last Zoom meeting and it would be nice to have a quasi judicial hearing in person as well as the other items. City manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One of the recommendations this morning in our discussion on the interviews, which I'll have, I'll have Suzanne talk about in my report, was a potential, I think we're going to be sending it out, interviews on a day, a couple of days prior to the 21st. So just throwing that out there right now, I'll have Suzanne chat about that and the, and the open vacancy that's still there for, for city council. I also have Emily provide the sales tax report for this month. But first, all city council members received the draft variance from Teller County. I, I understand that all members of city council support variances in our previous discussion. All I'd ask is I'm, I intend to write a letter of support for that to, to mirror what we see from Victor in Cripple Creek at this point. Are there any objections for a letter of support to the letter of, the variance letter to CDPHG to reopen the community?
I, I haven't read it thoroughly, but philosophically, I have no problem with it. Anybody else philosophically have a problem with it?
Mr. Mayor, I've also not read it thoroughly. I did a quick skimming after receiving it, but I am in complete agreement with the philosophical approach here. If there are some real problems in detail, I'll express that. But I think definitely we should at least begin putting something together that we can submit our concurrence.
Yeah, my intent, Mayor, is just to mirror the letter of supports that came from Victor and Cripple Creek. Not anything extensive other than that our community supports the reopening of our, of our businesses and our community in a, you know, in similar fashion that the Teller County, the Teller County Commissioners are seeking. That won't make it overly complicated.
Thank you.
So that's my intent and I will certainly ensure city council is included in that when it's, when it's sent to the county commissioners.
I saw a lot of nods, so I think we're okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's my, my anticipation is that from our previous discussions, everybody is in concurrence on that. I will pass my, my report over to Emily to provide the, the monthly sales tax report to city council.
Thank you, Darren. So included in the packet is the monthly sales tax report for sales tax collected in March, or sales in March rather, collected in April. And so, as was mentioned in Darren's update and in the report, we are down 5.8% compared to March of 2019, which March of 2019 was an exceptional month, especially if you compare it to past March sales tax revenue. So we are actually up year-to-date for 2019, 2020 over 2019, 9%. And that is 5.8% above the projected 3.2%. So we are monitoring, you know, what's going on with, you know, the economic impacts of this pandemic. And right now we are in, you know, luckily, we are in good shape. Of course, you know, we are concerned for all of the small businesses out there and are following, you know, the county and state guidance as far as reopening. And we are looking for, forward to the state, the state's budget update on May 12th. And so that is pretty much the update for now. And we will see, you know, where we are for April. And those are starting to come in, but again, they are, the due date is May 20th for April sales. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for, for Emily? If not, I will defer to Suzanne to provide an update on the potential interview schedule and the vacancy.
Thank you. I do have one comment that I want to read from the audience. And they are just, it's anonymous. It's, they're asking us if we could, in the future, please refrain from military time, that not everyone in Woodland Park is military. Just a comment. I'm just reading it so you can hear it. Okay, the council appointment, as most of you know already, the appointments are happening on May 21st is when council will make the appointment. The applications are due into the clerk's office by 5:00 PM on May 14th. Currently, I only have a couple of applications and so there is still time for more to apply if they'd like. What we were talking with the mayor about is the possibility of having interviews on a different night rather than on the same night of the appointment. Historically, the interviews take a long time. I know last time we had about eight of them, so it was a lot longer. So we've been talking about throwing out some dates there that I would put in a doodle poll for you to see if we can do that maybe on a Tuesday or Wednesday prior to the council meeting. Just do the interviews, then have the discussion at the council meeting and then you can make your selection and vote on it. That's one thing you'll be hearing from us regarding your opinion on and with the doodle poll. The second item is I'd like to just have council keep the date of June 1st open. We did a doodle poll a while back for our council retreat and that seems to be the date that can work for everybody. And we will have an agenda set and more information for you to follow as it gets closer. Thank you for the time.
Okay, Mayor, last thing I'll, I'll say is at the conclusion of this meeting, I, I request a five-minute recess and then we'll need to move into the executive session. In every one of the city council's emails, you'll have that link to that executive session. Please look at the last one. In the subject line, it's, it has, please use this one rather than, that's the one we want to use. So that's my recommendation, Mayor.
Thank you. We have no further business and on the active agenda, we, we are now going to go into executive session and we've got two of them. So I need a motion from the council to make, to move into executive session.
I'll move that we go into executive session, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a question about the rules that you put in place for our clock break. Are we doing 15 minutes?
I think, well, we, the city manager requested at least five so we could set up in the new meetings. If everybody like to take a bathroom break, let's make it 10. That's acceptable, everybody?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll have the ma- meeting open, Mayor, and, and are we ready to open? It's 7:40.
Very good. Thank you. So we're adjourned.
We have to vote.
Oh, yes, right. I'm sorry.
Ah, yes.
Karl?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to move into executive session carries unanimously.
We'll see everybody in 10 minutes and we're going to leave this meeting, right, Darren?
Yes, you got it. Meeting inside into the new meeting.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess the only good thing is, is we don't have to go up and downstairs.
Mayor Carr has to do. So yeah, it would be the next item on the agenda and then a motion second.
To move into executive session.
Correct. Oh, who's going to do the vote call? You got it?
Okay.
Beginning all here.
I think we're all here. In the regular session, uh, and you've changed out the tape. And so motion needed to go into executive session number two, I would, uh, appeal to the council.
I move that we go into executive session number two.
Thank you. Second case. Suzanne, Darren, whoever's there to take role.
All right. Um, so council member case?
Yes.
I'm trying to look into who's in order there. Uh, council member path?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem LaBarre?
Yes.
Council member Zuluaga?
Yes.
Council member Neil?
Yes.
Carries unanimously and we'll proceed to the other meeting again. And since we don't see anybody in attendance, um, we'll just go ahead and close this meeting. City call is still open here. If anybody chooses to join us in person after the executive session, uh, we'll make sure that they have an opportunity to hear that we are ended.
Thank you. I'll see you all on the other side again. Thank you.
When they're all gone, you can cancel out, right? But yeah, no.